Thank you and good morning. We're going to get started now. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, Legal Intelligencer prior to the meeting and can also be found on PHLcouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call a roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance will please indicate that you are present on whatever you may choose to say to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning. I am present. Looking forward to today's council session.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks. Councilman Dom.
Morning, council president, colleagues, and the Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gattie.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the public. Present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, members of council. Good morning, city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gibb.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Heenan.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues. Calling for justice for all the families who have lost loved ones to gun violence.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones.
Never mind.
Councilman O.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues. I'm present.
Councilman O'Neal.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kendra Sanchez. Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues. Present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public.
Good morning, council.
Council President Clark.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mr. President. I just want to make sure that I'm on the record as being present.
Thank you, councilman. I think we still have Councilwoman Brooks. Councilwoman Brooks getting on yet? Thank you. Okay, thank you. We've established a quorum, so we're now going to come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Pastor Jason Ferris of the Old Pine Community Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Squilla. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation. Pastor, please proceed.
Thank you. Let us pray. God of all creation, we thank you for the sunshine this week and the melting of all the snow. We thank you for the spirit of life that infuses all things and for the grace that appears even when we have done nothing to earn it. As we prepare our hearts and minds for today's meeting, we lift up the prayer of St. Augustine that in those things that are essential, we have unity; in those things that are not essential, we have liberty; and in all things, we have charity. May your spirit touch the heart of each person on this call, giving them the courage to seek truth and the grace to speak it with charity. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for those inspiring and spiritual words. We really appreciate you being here today.
You're very welcome. It was my pleasure.
Thank you. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 25th, 2021, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 25th, 2021 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. This is being moved promptly second at the meeting of the Journal on Thursday, February 25th, 2021. Stand and approve all in favor will indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Aye. And our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Here thanks to Councilwoman. And our next order of business is communication, and I would ask the clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession. From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March 1, 2021, I signed the following bills which were passed by council at its session on February 18, 2021. Bill numbers 200656, 210004, and 210006. Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. Despite we have been reminded, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I would thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, will you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by our members?
Councilwoman Parker offers three bills and three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation and the Commissioner of Procurement on behalf of the city to enter into a multi-year concession agreement with German American Marketing Incorporated doing businesses as Christmas Village in Philadelphia for the operation and management of the seasonal Christmas Village for the city of Philadelphia at Love Park and other potential city-owned areas.
And it will be referred to the appropriate committee.
On our own behalf, Councilwoman Parker offers an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Front Neck Street from Levek Street to Deveraux Avenue.
Further committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on Hammond Avenue between East Nidro Avenue and Crescentville Road.
Further committee.
And a resolution congratulating Bernard W. Smalley for being named president of the Board of Directors of City Trusts, making him the first black president in the board's 151-year history.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution remembering Henrietta Lacks and honoring her contribution to modern medicine, including the development of COVID-19 vaccines.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution commending and recognizing Michael Hand on the occasion of his retirement from his outstanding career with the Eastern Atlantic States Regional Council of Carpenters and his service to the Philadelphia community.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers two resolutions entitled a resolution recognizing and supporting the accomplishments of women and girls throughout history on the occasion of Women's History Month.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing the Women's March on Philadelphia during Women's History Month 2021 and the organizers who hosted four consecutive marches from 2017 through 2020.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and one resolution entitled an ordinance amending section nine to thirteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmer's Markets by adding a permissible location.
Further committee.
And a resolution also naming the 2,200 block of N. Southford, North Southford, as G.O.L. Myers Way in honor of George Linwood Myers III to commemorate his legacy and longtime dedication to various Philadelphia organizations and as an advocate of vulnerable populations.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers two resolutions entitled a resolution recognizing Rochelle Shelley Cameron on the occasion of her appointment as Chair of the U.S. Policy Council for Airports Council International.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution urging the U.S. Congress to pass Senate Bill 475 and House Resolution 1320, which designate Juneteenth as a national holiday.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers one resolution entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings regarding the potential of land value taxation in and for Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. That's this week's calendar.
And Councilwoman Brooks offers one resolution entitled a resolution calling on the Federal Reserve Bank of the United States to offer long-term loans with terms up to thirty years to meet the borrowing needs of state and local governments and government units in the United States without charging any interest or fees.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers one resolution entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining best practices and new ideas for safely reopening this city of Philadelphia's workspaces, including office buildings, city buildings, and other high-risk congregate settings not currently operating at pre-pandemic capacity.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers two resolutions entitled a resolution honoring the athletes of the class of 2020 for their incomplete seasons and shortening high school athletic career and shortened high school athletic career due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings on recently revealed memo on a recently revealed memo from a Philadelphia Police Department captain instructing his officers to increase pedestrian and motor vehicle stops not related to crime and jeopardizing data collection mandated by federal consent decree.
Mr. Decker, was that for committee or?
Yeah, it was, Mr. President.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Squilla offers two bills and two resolutions entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Greenwood Street and Second Street, Reed Street and South Ford Street, Moynihan Avenue, and Wharton Street.
Further committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Morris Street and South Second Street.
Further committee.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 538 Dudley, 639 Cantrell Street, 2842 through 44, and 2846 Tulip Street located in the First Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution in honor of Women's History Month, we take this opportunity to renew and recognize March 10th as Harriet Tubman Day in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers four resolutions. Entitled a resolution authorizing the Committee of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings to obtain an update on the status of the city's plan to ensure all parks or playgrounds owned or controlled by the city of Philadelphia are inclusive, intergenerational, and accessible for all disabilities and special needs.
Today's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings to obtain an update on the status of the city council's security camera program for Philadelphia's playgrounds and recreation centers.
Today's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing March 8, 2021, as International Women's Day to raise awareness of the adverse suppression and inequities that women have experienced and to continue to experience globally and to celebrate the achievements of women around the world and campaign for positive change.
That will be on next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Committees on Commerce and Economic Development and Public Health and Human Services to conduct a joint hearing to review the past and current guidance for restaurant capacity and, if needed, make recommendations to the Philadelphia Health Department to either change current restaurant capacity requirements or recommend future restaurant capacity requirements.
This week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports on committees.
Council President Clark?
Yes.
Information. My one resolution for March 10th was wondering if we could suspend the rules to have that heard at this week's council session.
Is there a second? It's been moved promptly second. All those in favor for rule suspension and allow reading this week's session? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. That will be on this week's calendar.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. With rule suspension.
Mr. President, for clarity, this is the resolution in honor of Women's History Month to recognize March 10th as Harriet Tubman Day?
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is reports on committees. The chair is going to recognize Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred Bill Number 210122 entitled an ordinance amending section nine, forty-one sixteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Health Emergency Leave to establish leave time for public health emergencies and modify existing provisions concerning the paid sick leave and make technical changes. Respecting the reports that has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of this day, on this day, of Bill Number 210122.
Second.
Thank you. This is being moved promptly second at the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 210122. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports on committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from the committee with suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had a first reading, and this bill will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. There are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, so the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210010, 210161, 210162, 210163, 210164, 210165, 210166, 210167, 210168, 210170, 210171, 210172, 210173, 210174, 210175, 210085, 210077, 210120, 210121, 210073, 210080, and 210082. All other resolutions and bills are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you. I think Councilwoman Brooks, for the record. Are you? Councilwoman Brooks, are you now?
Yes, Council President.
That the record reflect that Councilwoman Brooks is present. Thank you. Before we proceed with the consideration of our public comment, we'll take a brief five to ten-minute recess to give our technology professionals some time to connect the speakers that we have for today's meeting, but we'll take a brief recess. Thank you.
Being Council President, council members and participants, we are now live.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now that everyone is connected to the meeting and before considering resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider our public comment, and it will go as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comments. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or against the legislation, and we will then add you to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Today, you will have three minutes as it relates to your time limit. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, though, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. Once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. I also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers with repetitious comments that are being made on the same matter and to limit the scope of testimony to only certain items on the agenda during the emergency, which could affect callbacks for public comment after meeting. Also, please be aware that this public meeting is being recorded, and because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. So I'll now ask on Mr. Decker to please read the name of our first speaker.
The first speaker is Tanya Heberin, commenting on 210164.
Good morning.
Good morning. Proceed.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Heberin. I am a first-class construction equipment operator at SEPTA. Where I worked for twenty-seven years. I am also a member of the Steering Committee for WINK, which stands for Women in Non-Traditional Careers Initiative in Philly. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and support of Resolution Number 210164 to recognize March 7 through the 14th as Women in Construction Week and to honor WINK. I know how important it is to make women in construction more visible so other girls and women can know it's a career option for them. That's one of the things I like the most about WINK. We have a website, podcast, and speakers bureau to spread the word that, yes, women can do these jobs and we get paid well for them. I love my job and I want to give back by talking about what it's like to be a woman in a construction trade and to mentor the next group of tradeswomen. We need more women like me to enter and succeed in the trade. The whole community needs to get behind it, and WINK speaks too and educates everyone from unions, apprenticeships, and other training programs to trade schools, high schools, industry representatives, and anyone who wants to learn more. Another way that WINK supports tradeswomen is by gathering us together on Tradeswomen Thursdays, the Thursday of every month. I'm proud to be a part of WINK as we support increased and advanced participation of women in construction, manufacturing, and transit careers in the Philadelphia region. If anyone wants to connect with WINK, they should visit our website at winkproject.org. Please support this resolution to recognize March 7 through the 14th as Women in Construction Week and to honor WINK. We will be making women in construction more visible and attract more women to these satisfying and well-paying careers in the trade. Thank you to all the co-sponsors and to the city council for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate you.
The next speaker is Ash Screech, commenting on 210164.
Good morning. My name is Ash Ritchie. I'm an apprentice electrician with IBW Local Union 98. I've been in the local for three and a half years. I'm also a member of the Steering Committee for WINK, Women in Non-Traditional Careers Initiative here in Philly, and a member of WINK's Speaker Bureau. I'm happy to be here to comment in support of Resolution Number 210164 to recognize March 7 through 14th as Women in Construction Week and to honor WINK. I personally feel very blessed to be a member of my union, to receive a free education through my union, to get paid proper wages as I learned the trade, and I want to make sure that other women have access to this opportunity. That's why I believe in WINK. I believe that it's become an important resource for aspiring tradeswomen and for young women that may not yet know about the trades as an option for them due to a lack of visibility and accessibility. Volunteer tradeswomen podcast interviews and videos, social media, our website, they provide more of that visibility to let women know that, yes, the trades are open to them, and, yes, they are more than capable of doing the work. I believe this work as a whole is good for the industry and it's incredibly important for gender equity. These traditionally male-dominated trades offer solid wages, benefits, stability, not to mention that unions have basically eliminated the gender wage gap. The more people that know about this initiative, the better. So we speak to everyone from unions, apprenticeships, and other trading programs to trade schools, high schools, industry representatives, and anyone who wants to be involved or learn more, hoping to spread this message that women belong in the trade and it is an option for them as they look towards the future. I'm proud to be part of this initiative as we support, increase, and advance the participation of women in construction, manufacturing, and transit careers in this region. Please support this resolution to recognize March 7 through 14th as Women in Construction Week and to honor WINK. Thank you to all the co-sponsors and the city council for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Mary Gaffney, commenting on 210164.
Hello, council. My name is Mary Gaffney. I am owner of Gem Mechanical Services, Inc., located in Aston, Pennsylvania. I am a member of the Philadelphia chapter of the National Association of Women in Construction. And although you've heard from two construction workers, female construction workers, and we've had a massive push to bring more women into the construction industry, we still only make up roughly ten percent of the workforce. And many of those roles are in managerial or engineering. Very few women are working on site or in the trades. Gem Mechanical is a signatory contractor with the local union 420 Steam Fitters and local union 690. I am here today and thank you for allowing me to be here. I am for Resolution 210164 to recognize March 7 through the 14th as Women in Construction Week and to honor the National Association of Women in Construction. Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Thank you so much for your testimony, we appreciate you.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker.
Mr. President, before we move on to the next order of business. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Before we move on, I just wanted to note for the record that Councilwoman Maria Canones Sanchez, she has been with us too, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Sanchez is present and has been present for quite some time. Thank you. Okay, now that we've concluded our public comment session, we will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading in our final passes calendar. So I'm going to ask Mr. Decker to please read the title of resolution number 210-010.
Resolution calling on the City of Philadelphia Board of Pensions and Retirement to adopt environmental, social, governance criteria and request and disclose climate risk information from all relevant parties.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I am recognized for the motion, may I make brief remarks regarding this resolution?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to very quickly talk about this resolution because we've been working on this for several months. The resolution is calling on the Pension Board to establish environmental, social, and governance criteria as a part of its investment policy statement, and asking for climate risk disclosure where appropriate. We are obligated to consider the biggest risks posed to our financial system, and climate change remains a threat. Even under the best-case scenarios for emissions reductions, which we are not even close to meeting, we will continue to see disruptions to every part of our global economy. We have to understand those risks and actively develop strategies to drive investment into the sectors that will help us build a resilient economy and clean energy system. Industry leaders have started looking at climate risk and sustainable investing, and the Biden administration has also demonstrated its commitment to climate finance with the selection of senior administration officials who will prioritize climate risk in their rulemaking. 2020 was a record year for ESG investing, with sustainable funds seeing record inflows and high performance. ESG funds outperformed traditional equity funds in 2020, and experts expect continued growth. When this occurs, this is a win for our fund, which is a win for our retirees. Additionally, the Pension Board has shown its commitment to our retirees and to creating thoughtful strategies to align its work with the city's other priorities. Importantly, its strong commitment to diversity and inclusion. The Board has actively worked to increase its investment in firms owned and operated by women and people of color through annual utilization studies, new RFP rules, inclusion in the firm interview process, tracking demographic data for each firm's management, among other strategies. Through this hard work, the Board has shown that you can meet fiduciary obligations and use active strategies to address systematic challenges in the financial system. It is because of this visionary work that I wanted to work with the Pension Board on how we can begin thinking about our city's financial exposure to the impacts of climate change. I am grateful to the Pension Board, to their staff, for their hard work and collaboration with my office, and I wanted to personally thank a few people from the Pension Board, including the staff, all the members of the Pension Board, but most especially Carol Stooks Baylor of DC 47, Veronica Penkey of DC 33, Ron Sagliano of the Fraternal Order of Police, and Brian Coughlin of the International Association of Firefighters, and Bob McDermott, Council President, on our team. They all worked together very closely with my team, with Eliza, with Santos and Taylor, to ensure we could see this resolution to conclusion. So I want to personally thank them for their openness to working with my team and I to ensure that we were able to address all the challenges with this, a very complicated issue. And finally, I'd like to thank you colleagues for your support on this resolution and for our continued, ongoing collaboration on how we can best prepare our city for the impacts of climate change. And with that, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, this has been properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 210-161.
A resolution commemorating the life and legacy of William Cody Anderson, a legendary figure in talk radio, a pioneering leader in African-American-owned radio and media, and a positive voice in the Black community.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
Thank you, this has been properly moved and seconded. Can we have a moment of silence for this resolution? Thank you, moved in. Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you all very much, and we will genuinely miss Cody big time. Last said. Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210-162.
A resolution launching the establishment and funding of the Philadelphia Anti-Violence Resource Network to provide a one-stop clearinghouse of information and guide Philadelphians directly affected by violence in their communities to available resources within the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 210-163.
Resolution calling on the federal government to enact a plan by the end of President Biden's first 100 days in office to cancel all student loan debt and begin the transition to education as a public good.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, this has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 210-164.
A resolution declaring March 7th through 14th, 2021, during Women's History Month as Women in Construction Week in the city of Philadelphia and honoring women in non-traditional careers for their commitment to support, increase, and advance the participation of women in construction, manufacturing, and transit careers in the Philadelphia region.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 210-165.
A resolution honoring and commending Jennifer R. Clark for her 15-year tenure as the Executive Director of the Public Interest Law Center and her strategic pioneering and transformative work to expand access to justice that has changed the lives of hundreds of thousands of people across Pennsylvania and the nation.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 210-166.
A resolution recognizing the Philadelphia Obituary Project for its work to provide dignity to homicide victims and solace to their families by remembering and honoring those victims' lives.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, this has been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 210-167.
A resolution designating Monday, March 1st, 2021, as COVID-19 Remembrance Day in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Green for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This week, we've had a lot of great news as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. Governor Wolf announced how the J&amp;J vaccines will be used to vaccinate teachers throughout the Commonwealth, and he anticipates that we'll have all teachers and contractors vaccinated by the end of March. Also, President Biden recently announced that he anticipates by the end of May, all those in the nation that wants to receive vaccines will be able to receive vaccines by the end of May. And we also just opened our FEMA site as well, provide 6,000 vaccines a day here in the city of Philadelphia. So we're making great progress, but we also have to recognize and remember that a year ago, we were in our council chambers, we're doing things that we normally would do, and then we had the onset of the novel coronavirus. And we have lost over 500,000 souls in this nation, in Philadelphia alone, over 3,000 people. And so we have to recall and remember all of the people that lost their lives, our first responders, our essential workers, so many individuals that we have lost based on this pandemic. I want to commend Smart City Policy for working with various cities around the nation. 152 cities and 36 states acknowledged March 1st as our first COVID Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. And I think because of the impact that this pandemic has had and for us to never forget those people that we have lost, so many of our loved ones, our friends, coworkers, that is important for us to acknowledge this anniversary. And with that, Council President, after the motion, I'd like us to take a moment of silence to just reflect on what has happened over the past year. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Can we take a moment of silence? Thank you. Let that moment of silence reflect in a favorable vote for the resolution, and that resolution has been adopted. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210-168.
A resolution recognizing and congratulating Renee Henderson on the occasion of her retirement from Community Behavioral Health after more than two decades of faithful and dedicated service.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Green for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210-170.
A resolution congratulating Councilmember Javalel L. Parker on her historic appointment as Board Chair of the Delaware River Port Authority and honoring her work as a board member and trailblazing leader in Philadelphia.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Don for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I congratulate and applaud the journey leader Parker and ask for the approval of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 210-171.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the After School Activities and Partnerships Chess Club for their bringing together over 150 clubs and 2,500 students across the city and being instrumental in Philadelphia being named Chess City of the Year by U.S. Chess.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
I wanted to really thank the American Heart Association, and I move for the adoption of this very important resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 210-173.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Lynette Medley and her daughter Nia McLoone for their menstrual hub, the spot period, and for their work they have done to provide menstrual products and ongoing support for those suffering from period poverty.
Thank you. One more time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned last week, period poverty is a real issue, and it's a very serious issue. And for those of us who are women who have a menstrual cycle, we know that the terror that can happen when your menstrual cycle becomes, it happens and you are unaware that it was going to happen. And so for women who are in period poverty and do not have access to product, it's critically important. So all that being said, I move for the adoption of this also very important resolution today.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210-174.
A resolution recognizing the month of February as National African-American Read-In Month and honoring Dr. Ebony Elizabeth Thomas Humanizing Stories Project for its work to bring together diverse voices from the world of children's media, literature, and culture through digital advocacy, community projects, and classroom resources.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm honored to move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 210-175.
A resolution refuting the article "Contracting for Sex in the Pacific War", which contradicts the historical consensus and evidence of the thousands of women forced into sexual slavery by the Japanese Imperial Army before and during World War II, written by J. Mark Ramsayer, Mitsubishi professor of Japanese Legal Studies at Harvard Law School.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to resolution number 210-175. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that amendment to resolution number 210-175 be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution has been amended. Chair again recognizes Councilman O for motion on the amended resolution.
Thank you. I move for the option of the resolution as amended.
Second.
Did I hear second?
Second, yes.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the resolution as amended be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 210-085.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter providing for expansion of the Board of License and Inspection Review and providing for the submission of the proposed amendment to the electors in Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, that requires two-thirds vote.
Okay. That requires two-thirds vote, thank you. And Mr. Decker, are more than capable, Chief Burt. Councilwoman Parker?
Yes, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
You have second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be adopted because resolution number 210-085 is an amendment to the Home Rule Charter that requires two-thirds vote. vote. Therefore, the question is, shall this resolution be adopted? Chief clerk will call the rule. Mr. Decker, call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gotti A?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. More than two-thirds of all members of the council have been voting in affirmative. Resolution number two one zero oh eighty-five has been adopted. Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two one zero zero seven seven. Hearing this? Mr. Decker, did you hear me?
Oh, I apologize, Mr. President. An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the general fund, the council, to the general fund, the Department of Planning and Development.
Thank you. This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gotti A?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil? Councilman O'Neil? Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, and nays are zero. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two one zero one two oh.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the general fund, the council, to the general fund, certain law, city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and thereby implementing council's new normal jobs initiative.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gotti A?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil? Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. Ayes are sixteen, and nays are zero. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero one twenty-one.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance, provision for other grants, to the general fund, the Managing Director.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. A few weeks ago, I stood in front of the link and implored the mayor to put in place a vaccination plan, big enough and bold enough, vaccinate this city with the speed our citizens demand, in order to get our lives back, our families back, and get us back to work. For three weeks, administration rejected the plan, saying we didn't have enough vaccines to make a site as big as the link necessary. During these weeks, I asked the administration to plan for a time when vaccines exceed our capacity to deliver them through normal channels. Last week, I called on the mayor to deliver to city council a plan to do just that. I said then, that without a plan for scaling up capacity to meet doses, I could not in good conscience vote to hand over more money to the administration. And last Saturday, the front page of the Philadelphia Inquirer in a banner headline said what I feared all along. The city's problem was no longer a lack of vaccines, but our lack of capacity to distribute them. If you didn't think we needed a plan, when the mayor was saying we had more than enough capacity, surely now, three weeks later, we are running out of capacity and a plan is needed detailing specifically how we're going to scale up. Now, less than twenty-four hours ago, we finally received last night their plan. My fellow colleagues, this plan will not get us to where we need to be. Here's why. City based its dosage estimates on President Biden's plan he laid out in mid-February to deliver three hundred million doses to America by the end of July. A plan based on Biden's mid-February projections would have made sense, but for the fact that forty-eight hours ago, as Councilmember Green noted today, the president changed the timetable, and now three hundred million doses are going to be delivered by the end of May, two months earlier than the president's earlier projection, two months earlier. And unfortunately for all of us, two months earlier than the city's current plan. This plan can only mean one thing. The city intends to get all of our vaccines by the end of May, but remains woefully unprepared to deliver them until the end of July. And that's if you believe in the ability of the city to scale up to deliver them by July, given the plan they presented. So, let me just take a quick look at the plan. This plan says that thirty-five percent of the city's capacity to deliver doses by the last week of April will come from FEMA. There are only two problems with this assumption. First, the FEMA site is set to close by the last week of April. Second, FEMA is not responsible for providing capacity for the city's dose allocation. FEMA has its own separate dose allocation. Now, let's rerun the numbers for a moment, using the current White House plan for vaccine delivery and the current understanding of FEMA's role in our city's distribution. Soon under the Biden timeline, our dose count is two hundred thousand per week by the end of April, and not the hundred and twenty thousand under the city's plan. Taking FEMA doses out of the city's capacity equation means we can deliver seventy-eight thousand of those two hundred thousand doses that we, that we will be receiving every week thereafter, at which time, according to the president's due timeline, we will receive our full share of doses. That leaves us over one hundred and twenty-two thousand doses undelivered each week for four weeks. So, this plan would have city council accept today the proposition that in a city of one point five million people, we will delay dosing almost five hundred thousand of our residents, all because we couldn't figure out how to scale up capacity to dose them faster than through the end of July. My fellow colleagues, this is a plan built for failure. Filling fighting COVID disaster just doesn't happen on its own. It happens when because we failed the plan. Jumping the line at the convention center doesn't just happen. It happens because we failed the plan. Twenty-two percent of the doses going to African Americans who make up forty-four percent of Philadelphia doesn't just happen. It happens because we failed to prevent it. When the convention center was chosen as a FEMA site, I was concerned, and I warned that putting a mega site in center city, a sixty-seven percent white neighborhood, using a registry that is disproportionately white, would not achieve racial equity. Today, our quote came out today, WHYY reports that the white neighborhoods within walking distance of the convention center are trying to jump the line. And what is the administration's response? The mayor said, scolding Philadelphians to examine their conscience. I say to the mayor and administration, why don't we first examine our failed technology? I've asked for a one-stop shop to manage scheduling so these failures would end, and do the work necessary to correct the problems that come with a lack of planning. We don't expect perfection, but we do expect leadership to admit when they are wrong, have made mistakes, and then let's work together to get it right. Just this morning, I received a response to my questioning of the projected doses in the plan. The mayor says the plan is fluid, and that the charts are merely illustrative. Let me tell you, I've seen a lot of action plans in my day. And when the planners use words like fluid and illustrative, it usually means there is no plan. I listened to President Biden when he revised the timetable for doses. I assure you that President Biden was not being fluid or illustrative when he announced his plan, and neither should we. Until we own up to the real numbers and a real plan, we will lose the fight for racial equity and ensure that our city will still be fighting this pandemic while other big cities in America are on the road to recovery. Three, three weeks ago, I said the link was the best option for scaling up capacity to deliver doses with speed and equity. Yesterday, I hosted a conference call with our partners who could get this done, and they all stand ready to deploy the link to deliver ten thousand-plus vaccinations a day. Today, the link doesn't just stand as the best option, it's probably the only option on large scale we have left to get there by the end of May. The mayor wants us to hand over fifty million dollars today for this plan that does not work. I cannot vote until I see a plan that works, one that's as big and bold as the hopes and dreams we all have for a city that can finally put this pandemic behind us. This is the most important issue of our life. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Real, real quick, Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil, if he wants to do.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I had a technical connection problem, and I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on bill number twenty-two one zero one two zero and bill number two one zero zero seven seven.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank Councilmember Dom for all of the work and advocacy he has done in, on this effort, really elevating the seriousness of the amount of work in front of us. And yesterday's plan submitted by the administration that was produced prior to the Biden administration, I agree with him, must be updated to reflect on some of those realities. This has been a very, very bumpy ride. I said that last Thursday as I stood in the mass vaccination center in my district, as I work with FEMA and all of the federally certified health centers, not only in my district, but, you know, throughout the city for us to roll out bolder, more aggressive plans. Transportation is a challenge. We saw that even in center city. We have many seniors scheduled today and tomorrow, and many of my nonprofit organizations have had to rent vans and provide transportation services to get folks here to center city, and it's been an incredible challenge. And so, I agree with Councilman Dom that this plan has to be updated and bolder. I know that Councilwoman Bass, who now is part of the Vaccination Advisory Council, will work with the administration. I know district council people are working on this aggressively to ensure equity. In addition to community academy, high school in my district, I have several different locations that FEMA is looking at in my district. So, yes, it's not an either or. It is and, 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 as we scale up this issue. But we have to bear in mind that SEPTA and some of the challenges of SEPTA create a problem for folks wanting to get on public transportation. And ultimately, it is about getting those small independent providers in our district, the smaller pharmacies, all of those things which we are working on, all of us, to ensure as much neighborhood-based access as possible. So, I join the, the council member in saying, yes, this plan needs to be updated and reflected. I encourage all of my council colleagues to continue to work with Councilmember Bass and the administration to expand that, that access. And I do think, and I will continue to support Councilmember Dom and his, and whoever submits a proposal for the link, for that to also become an option for us. Are we where we need to be? Absolutely not, Council President Clark. And I appreciate the leadership team for meeting with the administration and being aggressive about us needing to do more. But nevertheless, I don't want to send a message to the citizens of Philadelphia that city council is going to hold up any resources for us to get a vaccination plan on the ground. But I will continue to pressure and insist that these plans continue to be updated and reflect that goal of equity. I too want to make sure that we establish goals that are reachable around this equity issue, and, and particularly as we roll out the one C category, where districts like mine's essential workers, many of us believe should have been on one A, not one C, all of these restaurant workers, health coworkers, all the folks who have been working throughout this entire year and this pandemic. So, I want to thank Councilmember Dom for his advocacy. I want to thank you, Council President, our leadership team, and Councilwoman Bass. We're going to keep pushing. This is not the end of the conversation. This is a continuing conversation. I'm happy to continue to provide updates as the administration provides them to us. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I too want to thank council members Bass, Dom, Kenona Sanchez, and quite frankly, all members of this body for aggressively pursuing the equitable distribution of the COVID vaccine to all residents in the city of Philadelphia. The passion and the sense of urgency that we hear from all regarding this issue is extremely necessary and warranted. With that being said, Mr. President, I just wanted to note for the record that when we hear that the plan that was presented is fluid, as a result of our leadership meeting, Mr. President, that we had with the administration last week, I have to affirm that it is fluid. And it is fluid because one of the things that we have talked about that was not included in what was distributed is vaccine sites that what we're calling neighborhood-based vaccine sites, one in every council district in particular. In addition to that, Mr. President, I have to note this. I am a huge fan of information, Mr. President. And one of the things that we discussed is that every vaccination site throughout the city of Philadelphia, and particularly by council district, should be readily available for public view, so that no matter where you live in the city of Philadelphia, we wouldn't care if it's, the vaccine is being distributed as a hospital or at a church, or some other neighborhood-based facility, that residents across the city should see that menu. During our leadership meeting, the mayor and his team affirmed that, and noted that that is something as well that they would work on while making sure that district council members, you know, in particular, and of course, all of our at-large members would be informed and, and asked to add value, you know, Mr. President, where possible. So, to Councilmember Dom, Councilmember Bass, Maria Kenona Sanchez, and all members of council, I think we're all rowing in the, in the right direction, because we want to see the equitable distribution of this vaccine readily available to people across the city and in neighborhoods across the city. So, thank you all, and I'm proud to be a part of this body that has not in any way, shape, or form underestimated the sense of urgency that we face right now regarding this issue. So, Councilmember Dom in particular, I want to thank you, sir, for your leadership. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Point of information, Mr. President. Point of information.
Um, jumping the line, sir, but go ahead.
No, I wait. No.
Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you very much, Council-
Thank you very much, Council President. I quickly wanted to thank our appropriations chair, Councilmember Sanchez, for her work. Even during the hearing, I was listening to that appropriations committee hearing, and our Chair of Public Health and Human Services, Councilmember Bass, for all of her work on this issue. But I also rise in continued support of my colleague, Councilmember Dom, and for his persistence in ensuring that we can have an equitable distribution of the vaccine across communities here in the city of Philadelphia. While I recognize we have faced significant challenges at the onset of the distribution, I do want to personally thank the administration for partnering and working with my office to ensure that we were able to have a briefing for local community pharmacies to walk them through the process step by step on how they can become a part of the vaccine distribution in our local communities in Philadelphia. So I agree with our Majority Leader and our leadership team that we are all rowing in the same direction, and it's important for us to continue to work together to have an equitable distribution of the vaccine. And while the numbers are increasing, we are still on the low end as it relates to African Americans who have been vaccinated in the city. So I want to continue to work with all of you, all of my colleagues, our leadership team, and the administration to ensure that we can have a distribution of this vaccine across zip codes in the city of Philadelphia. And I want to put on the record three neighborhoods that I have heard from consistently in my office, and I'm going to put this on the record today so that folks know where I am. Now, of course, Councilmember Jones, my district council member, and my colleague, I'm going to put Winfield on the record. We have naturally occurring aging communities, particularly in Winfield Heights, but also we have a large seasoned citizens population in Winfield proper, so I'm putting Winfield 19131 on the map. Also, I've heard from a number of constituents, and I can't even count, my team will have to give me the full number, from the Northeast. And while we recognize we want this distribution to be equitable, I have to put on the record that I've heard from so many Philadelphians in that community around the need to be vaccinated. And finally, Councilmember Squilla, the First Council District, I receive a lot of calls from that area as well. That is technically my home district and where my grandmother resides, so I have to put a plug in for South Philadelphia on the east side of Broad Street. But I look forward to continuing to work with the administration and with all of you to ensure that we have an equitable distribution of this vaccine. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before proceed, Councilman Jones, I apologize, did you call for a point of order? You want me to, Councilman?
Uh-oh. He just left me.
Okay. Councilman Jones? Councilman Jones, you got it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
Did you call for a point of order, Councilman?
It was a point of information, but that's okay.
Go ahead, you can go ahead.
I yield. All right, so what I was, I actually yield that point of information, but if there are no other people in front of me, I would like to make a point on this topic.
Yeah, Councilman Green is teed up to speak.
Did I yield?
I did want to acknowledge your.
Um, Council President, Councilmembers, just continue.
Thank you. One of the things about what Majority Leader Parker talked about and in the meetings that we've had is communications. There's a lot being done, but it's not being documented as accurately in a way that gives other members in this body the degree of confidence that they need and should have. And that is in part because there are other entities outside of government entities that have to report in that plan. There are other entities doing vaccinations, and they are overlapping priorities, quite frankly. And what we found, and what your leadership and I thank you for intervening in this negotiations, dialogue, and joint plan, is that we're looking at what we control within city government and what we can influence in the private sector and federal governments. An example of that is the plan to work with private drugstores, CVS, and Rite Aid. That is the overlapping plan. Internally, we're trying to move departments to make sure essential workers are vaccinated, people that work in our prisons, people that work in the police department, people that work in the fire department, and teachers that are going back into classrooms. All of these aspects of a unified plan have to be put in one, as Member Majority Leader Parker stated, a matrix, a single point of information. And that's the difficulty that is before us because a lot of people are doing things, but if we don't coordinate and communicate those things, people assume the worst. So I just want to say that as district councilpeople, which I appreciate the administration is doing, nobody knows your district, Mr. President, like you do. Access to transportation, different vulnerable populations that are being impacted, and all of those things are being considered by an administration that doesn't have a playbook that they can pull from and have to build and fly a plane in a pandemic at the same time. And I just want to say as an observation, no, we don't have Fauci, like the National Health Director, but we do have Farley, who is not perfect, but in my opinion, is striving to move things in the right direction. And at times, members of this body feel not fast enough, but this is not something we've done before, and we are trying to get it right, and I vouch for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I would thank all the colleagues for weighing in on this issue. Earlier in this session, we did a resolution acknowledging those that were lost through to this pandemic, and we have a fight on our hands, but we should not be fighting against each other. I supported Councilmember Dom's proposal to add the link as another location for vaccine distribution. I did that based on my communications and discussions with colleagues in National League of Cities and Pennsylvania Municipal League and other organizations around the country because I saw what they were doing. And even though I'm going to vote for this resolution, I'm still going to continue to push for the issue that Councilmember Dom is talking about, that we need to all look at all available options in reference to winning this fight against COVID. And I just think it's unfortunate that we are spending time fighting against each other and not fighting together against COVID. So just because Councilmember Dom continues to push for the link as a location and made his position known that he wants, that he's going to vote against this bill because of his concerns, and others in this body will vote for it, we should not take the perspective that the administration coming out of Councilmember Dom's position to continue to fight him on his position regarding the link. We're going to be in a position, and hopefully soon, having numerous vaccines that we need to get out to people all around the city of Philadelphia, both at large locations like the link or at the convention center, or smaller locations that number of members of council discussed. Just yesterday, we had a call with the Pennsylvania Municipal League prior to the governor's announcement, and what we learned about the fact that J&amp;J vaccines will be used and prioritized for teachers. The first allotment will be about 94,000 vaccines, and they anticipate another allotment in order to vaccinate all teachers by the end of March, all teachers and contractors by the end of March. And I asked what is going to be the plan after that, once we've gotten through the teachers, about getting other allotments of J&amp;J vaccines to do additional mass vaccinations around the Commonwealth. And at that point, Secretary Gormaz, who was the Secretary of Intergovernmental Affairs, said, well, we're not sure, we're still working through that information, we don't know all the allotment of vaccines we'll receive through J&amp;J. So this is a situation that's very fluid, and so we need to work together. We'll disagree on different opinions. Members have the right to vote for or against any bill or resolution, but at the same point, just because someone takes a position, we should not then attack them for taking that position because we're all trying to do all that we can to address this situation. As I stated earlier in this week, I was deeply offended about a comment that came from the mayor's office in reference to my support and other members' support for Councilmember Dom's proposal regarding the link, but I'm still going to continue to work for it because we can't spend time fighting against each other. So I hope in the spirit of this conversation and this debate on this bill, that regardless of what position people take, both administration and members of council, going forward, we're going to fight together against COVID and not fight against each other. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I agree that we are all trying to deal with this pandemic and doing the best we can. The executive branch is responsible for planning, they have the personnel, and they're responsible for execution. They come to us to ask for money, and this money that they've asked, it's not the first time, it's not specified, they want a lot of flexibility, I understand that, but I agree with Councilmember Ellen Don because about this time being, it will be over $225 million, they have to produce a plan. It's late in the day, we're not in the first quarter, this is a year, and knowing that the vaccines are coming and with all the issues that we have, I expect a better plan. And I will be voting no to encourage the administration to produce a better, more detailed plan that covers all four corners of this city and every demographic that they are supposed to cover. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just really wanted to, I don't want to belabor the point because I know there's been a lot of conversation on the issue, and I just wanted to say a couple of things really quickly. And one is that we all recognize that when it comes to the city of Philadelphia and how COVID was handled, the city really stumbled getting out of the gate. So this plan is a welcome game changer in this series of events that have really shattered public confidence and city government, but I do believe that we are on the right track. But if we really want to address the racial divide in terms of who's getting it and who needs it, then we really need to follow the lead of public health experts and press that are stating that African-American and Latino communities need to be vaccinated at younger ages. The age requirement has to be lowered to qualify for the vaccine for communities that, if they are infected, will likely have a much more catastrophic outcome. And so we have to think about how do we lower the age here in Philadelphia? We know we can do this, we know that it really requires the leadership of the mayor, and we think that this is something that has to happen if you really want to do something about those who get the virus. And then, let's say if you're 45, you may have a different outcome if you're African-American or Latino versus someone who is not and who's 65 or older. The odds are against you, so I just really want to put that into the conversation, certainly hope the administration is listening and hearing what needs to be done. I think that we're on the right track, but we need vaccine sites in the neighborhoods, we need the vaccine site at the convention center, and we can still use and need the vaccine site down at the link as well. It doesn't have to be one or the other, we can have it all, and I believe we can do this. We cannot call ourselves seriously a city of eds and meds without being able to figure this out. This should really be a no-brainer, we really can do it all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I'm not going to be able to point to, and thanks everybody for working on this, we know how serious this is. I just wanted to add one more thing, and it was that, you know, before the concern was that we may not have enough vaccines to have these sites, but now the concern is maybe we don't have enough providers to provide the vaccines. So I think what the call should be from all of us is to, you know, let's talk to our partners out there and providers and locations, and, you know, let's try to work with the administration, and I agree, we need as many sites as possible up, and we need to get vaccines as many arms as possible. So now that we know that the vaccines will be coming in, and as Councilmember Dom had said, that, you know, there's going to be more than we can handle, we need now to plan for getting those partners on board so we could distribute these vaccines, and hopefully with all of us combined, continuing to work together, we'll get to that point, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm not supposed to speak from the podium, so I will not do that, because apparently that influences votes, so I won't speak from the podium, but I do want to say that, reiterate first my commitment and now leadership's commitment to continue to carry the messages from the members of council and move the needle forward on all aspects of what you all talk about, so that is taking place and will continue to take place. We appreciate everybody's perspective because it is very important. So with that, Mr. Decker, can you please read the title one more time of 210121?
I'm ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance, provision for other grants, General Fund, the Managing Director.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the room. Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Nay.
Councilman O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Canones Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark? Aye. Ayes are 15 and ayes are two. Majority of all members have been voting in in front of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 210073.
I'm ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Hall of Fame Charter, providing for the expansion of the Board of License and Inspection Review, as approved by resolution of the city council, fixing the date of special election for such purpose, prescribing a formal ballot question to be voted on, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arraions for the special election.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the room. Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Canones Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark? Aye. Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of all members present voting in in front of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 210080.
I'm ordinance submitting section 2610 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Statement of Financial Interests by revising the required conditions and information for filing.
Mr. Decker, please call the room. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Council.
I'm sorry. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, now call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes are seventeen, nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two-one-zero-oh-eight-two.
I'm an ordinance submitting title seventeen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by amending chapter seventeen, fourteen-hundred, entitled non-competitively bid contracts, financial assistance, to provide procedures applicable to the awarding of contracts to non-city providers of vaccine doses for COVID-nineteen and related variants.
This bill had been been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye. Uh, Councilman Johnson. Yeah, you got it.
Aye, Council President.
Okay, got you. Thank you. Uh, eyes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in in affirmative. The bill passes.
Uh, Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings regarding the potential of land value taxation in and for Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining best best practices and new ideas for safely reopening the city of Philadelphia's workspaces, including office buildings, city buildings, and other high-risk congregant settings not currently operating at pre-pandemic ca- capacity, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. And that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings on a recently revealed memo from a Philadelphia Police Department captain, instructing his officers to increase pedestrian and motor vehicle stops not related to crime and jeopardizing data collection mandated by federal consent decree, introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution in honor of Women's History Month. We take this opportunity to renew and recognize March tenth as Harriet Tubman Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
If you're moving properly, second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committee of Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings to obtain an update on the status of the city's plan to ensure all parks or playgrounds owned or controlled by the city of Philadelphia are inclusive, intergenerational, and accessible for all disabilities and special needs, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committee of Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs to hold hearings to obtain an update on the status of the City Council's security camera program for Philadelphia's playgrounds and recreation centers, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the Committees on Commerce and Economic Development and Public Health and Human Services to conduct a joint hearing to review the past and current guidance for restaurant capacity. And if needed, make recommendations to the Philadelphia Health Department to either change current restaurant capacity requirements or recommend future restaurant capacity requirements, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. And we will now move to our speeches. Um, we have a process uh prior to recognizing those members regarding speeches. I will note for the record at this time, um, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this purpose. Uh, with that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I wanted to thank uh all my colleagues uh for voting to um adopt a resolution um two-one-zero-one-seven-five, uh which is a resolution refuting the article contracting for sex in the Pacific War. This is uh Women's History Month, and we're talking about history. This is something that happened in the nineteen thirties and forties. Uh, yet people will be very upset as though it is an attack upon them today. It is not. But you cannot change history uh when there is such a consensus and overwhelming evidence of the atrocities against women during World War Two by the Japanese Imperial Army, well documented. Um, and I won't go into that. However, unfortunately, uh there was an article, and I read the article, it's not a very long article, by a Harvard Law professor, Mark Ramsayer, which basically brought forth the idea that before World World War Two, during and after, women voluntarily contracted through an elaborate process of being prostitutes for the Japanese Army and refuting the testimony, the photographs, all the history about the brutalization of women during that war. And and the thousands and thousands of women, girls, and children that were abducted, tricked, brutalized, over ninety percent died. And um he entirely misses a reference to the Rape of Nanking, where the Japanese Army horrifically brutalized up to three hundred thousand people dead. Photographs of atrocious acts of sexual violence and atrocities against women and girls and children. Um, this re- rewriting of history um should be refuted. Uh, I will say that uh my father was born in Manchuria in China because the Japanese occupied uh Korea. And my and my father has no axe to grind with the Japanese. Uh, he was actually a student at Meiji uh University. My two uncles, Tokyo Imperial University, at a time where there was great discrimination against Koreans uh in uh by the Japanese in in occupied uh Korea and others. Um, and there were wonderful people in Japan. Um, and there have been Japanese leaders who have spoken out against this. And here in um the United States, uh Congressman Honda, uh Democrat from California, has led this effort as well. But um he did tell me, and he's dead. He died in two thousand six. And one of the problems is people who have witnessed this are dead. They are dying. And the people have testified and seen it as they pass away, a new version of history comes out. We had a conversation once where he told me that the um Japanese army came in and took uh hundreds of girls out of a middle school by force. Where they went, we don't know, but it's a, they never came back. It's assumed and understood that they weren't recruiting volunteers to go to the war front with a brutal army to get paid as prostitutes. And because of venereal disease and other things, they were looking for the youngest, most physically fit girls. The history is that women have been brutalized in wars. It is uh commonly understood that many of the prizes and the booty of these wars was raping women and girls and other things. A- and and so I I do appreciate that we do record this in history. Um, we acknowledge it. We don't forget it. And um I think this resolution is a statement from this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, speeches will be here. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first, I want to acknowledge uh my colleague, Councilman Dom, not because of his advocacy to deal with the plan of the virus, but for something different. He spent two, two hours with me online with about thirty students during Black History Month, listening to their poems, listening to their speeches. And um it meant so much to those young people to have council people pay attention uh to what they they said. And more more importantly, some of the feelings that they've had uh during the uprisings, during the pandemic, came across loud and clear to the both of us. And I just want to publicly acknowledge my colleague uh for spending that quality time with young people who will never forget um your involvement. And so thank you. Um, the second thing I want to talk about is um the scales of justice. And you know, being uh Chair of Public Safety, you know, I spent a little time researching what that actually meant and the symbol of justice with the goddess uh holding the two scales. Sometimes she had a blindfold. Sometimes she had a sword in the left hand. But my interpretation of that symbol is balancing the rights of victims with the rights of the accused and to come out with justice. Uh, and last week, two things happened. One, um, I stood beside Member Gaultier uh and Commissioner Outlaw when they apprehended four individuals uh that had uh are accused of doing nine shootings in my district and uh Member Gaultier's district. Um, and we stood in that um church where some of the families of the victims now could at least rest a little more at peace with the fact that the city of Philadelphia, the District Attorney's Office, the Philadelphia Police Department are actually out there apprehending shooters. So that's one part of that scale, Mr. President. The other part of that scale, which I was proud to hear about, is the prevention people pre-entry, as uh Keir Gray often calls it, by a group of barbers um out at ESPN Zone. They have a youth program, and they think very highly of you, Member Green. You have street cred among them. Um, and they are, and I don't know how it works in your barber shop, Mr. President, but he serves, they serve as therapists for us, whether it comes to sports, whether it comes to family issues, whether it comes to politics, they are our therapists. But what I didn't know was that they're interveners also when it comes to youth violence, that they hear what's going on. And uh uh Mike, who runs ESPN, along with his colleagues and other barbers around the city, actually have had, in their back rooms, in their barber shops, interventions because they service both ends, both uh corners, and are able to come in and say as credible messengers, y'all should stop. And I know you got street cred from North Philly. I heard something about Member Green, but from Mount Airy, it's a whole different thing. Um, but they still have that street cred with these vulnerable uh populations. Uh, and they're putting together a pro to intervene, to become mentors, to become counselors to these young people. And when I heard about it, it created that scale of balance. We have the left hand of punishment, that sword you often see in the the justice. And 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 whether you're in South Philly, West Philly, North Philly, Mount Airy, or Germantown, people want to make sure that police and the district attorney and and the uh courts are doing their their part to keep them safe. But on the other end of the spectrum, of the scales, that we're trying to prevent some of this, that we care enough about these young people to put out our resources. And I'm proud to say that they're watching us. Didn't know this. Like, I thought in barber shops, all you were going to get is some basketball and but they are actually paying attention to what we're doing, and I'm thankful for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. Uh, that is clearly the place where uh we get educated uh as elected officials. Uh, thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, um and colleagues. I just wanted to follow up on two things uh uh unintentionally. That wasn't an original part of my conversation um this morning. But I did want to mention that Councilman Curtis Jones. I wanted to thank him for his conversation around the importance of making sure that we engage our salon owners, our barber shops, our stylists. Uh, we have an upcoming uh series, the first in a series of conversations that we're going to have. Uh, and I want to invite anyone who's listening uh that's uh in that uh that part of the beauty business to a series of conversations that we're going to be having called Shop Talk. And that's going to be held this coming Monday, um five P M. Uh, and we're going to have our first featured speaker, which is Michael Rashid, our city's Director of Commerce, talking about how we can get uh businesses on track in this, you know, with with COVID and everything that's happening and um the uh problems that businesses are facing right now. So we're very, very excited about that. And we want uh folks, uh, you know, regardless of where you are in the city, out of the city, you know, if you have uh clients that you serve, then this is going to be a a series of conversations that is going to serve you well. So uh we want to encourage folks to contact our office and be a part of Shop Talk. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to thank my colleague, Dick, Councilman David O, for his commentary regarding uh women who were used essentially as sex slaves uh during World War Two. We need to shine a light on the atrocities. We need to make sure that they don't continue to happen. And we know whether it was during World War Two, before World War Two, or even in a few years ago with um the young women in Africa who were taken from a school, um, you know, in the middle of the night, who were kidnapped. you know, in the middle of the night who were kidnapped, and some of them have never resurfaced. You know, we need to pay attention, uh, to the atrocities against women, and this is Women's History Month. So, you know, I just really thank him for being, uh, you know, someone who is really progressive and thoughtful when it comes to the opposite sex and, uh, is paying attention to the issues that we face. I also wanted to say that, uh, as I mentioned, this coming Monday is International Women's Day, and that celebrates the socioeconomic, political, and cultural achievements of women all over the world, and it raises awareness of lobbies for and fundraisers for global gender equality. The twenty twenty-one theme for International Women's Day is Choose to Challenge, which calls for all people to confront gender bias and equality and take action for gender equality. Individuals and organizations all over the world are invited to share hashtag Choose to Challenge images in the lead up to International Women's Day twenty twenty-one. Each photo will feature an individual raising their hand to show one's commitment to challenging inequality, calling out bias, questioning stereotypes, and helping forge an inclusive world. Support for women comes in a critical time when we have experienced adverse impacts from the COVID nineteen pandemic. Black, Indigenous, and women of color disproportionately work in industries experiencing job losses and many jobs created, uh, or many jobs considered essential, such as nurses, home health aides, and childcare workers are dominated by women. Today, I want to recognize Vision Twenty Twenty, Women's Way, The Women's Campaign International, The Womanist Working Collective, My Sisters Keeper Collective, and Women Organized Against Rape for their work in mobilizing, investing in, empowering and supporting women and girls in Philadelphia. Thank you all for building a movement towards achieving women's equality in Philadelphia and setting a national and global example of campaigning for positive change. It is important that we continue to highlight the inequities and achievements of women and amplifies, and amplify the diverse voices of women around the world as we celebrate International Women's Day and Women's History Month. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much, Council President. And I wanted to, uh, thank my colleague, Councilmember Green, uh, for his resolution, uh, that passed today acknowledging, uh, each life, uh, lost due to COVID nineteen. Uh, I rose this morning to the devastating news, uh, that we have lost yet another Philadelphian to, to COVID nineteen. And my heart was very, very heavy to hear the passing of someone, uh, many of us have worked with, uh, in City Hall. Uh, you could find him on the fourth floor, on the northeast corridor, uh, when he was in the Civil Affairs Unit, uh, with the Philadelphia Police Department. So I wanted to rise today, uh, to acknowledge, uh, the loss, uh, and the passing of someone that, again, many of us have worked with, uh, over the years in City Hall, Officer Aaron Tokely. Uh, he was also a minister, uh, at Calvary Baptist Church, and I wanted to, uh, thank him, uh, for his twenty-four years of service and say to his family that, uh, our thoughts and prayers are with you, uh, and if there's anything that we can do for you, please feel free to, to let us know. But I wanted to acknowledge his passing, uh, as we, uh, have worked so closely over the years with him. And I just remember him sitting, uh, by the, uh, metal detectors on the fourth floor and always had a kind word to say. He was always dressed to the nines. You can always count on him to have one, a very nice suit, uh, and down to the shoes. He was just a wonderful dresser, and I'm just going to miss him, his kind words, his encouraging spirit, uh, and my prayers are definitely with his family and the entire, uh, Philadelphia Police Department, particularly the twelfth, the twenty-fifth, and the Civil Affairs Unit. Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, someone sent me his picture last night. I'm like, wow, you know, he's a good guy. Yeah. This is a brutal disease, I tell you. We gotta, we gotta beat it. We gotta beat it. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment to, uh, echo this in the midst of my colleague, uh, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, um, as it relates to, um, the recent passing, as well as, uh, Councilmember Green, as it relates to, um, his resolution. Um, I appreciate both of your leadership. Outside of that, uh, we did have a hearing a little while back as it relates to hit and runs, and my office has been, um, in a lot of communication with different people. And, um, unfortunately, um, and I want to thank Iggy Roll, um, in his, uh, interaction with victims for helping us with this issue. Um, some of the people, um, in, uh, North Philadelphia section of the city are, uh, in trauma, and, um, we want to also offer our condolences to, uh, Roberto Velez, who was a sixty-year-old person who, uh, unfortunately was hit, um, and killed by a hit and run accident that happened yesterday as well, too. And so, um, we just want to offer our condolences to that community, the family. Uh, we understand it was a really, really unfortunate situation, um, that traumatized a lot of people, and, um, this is another, uh, problem that we have in our city that, uh, this legislative body is working to rectify. So thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for bringing that to, uh, the forefront with your hero. Um, any other speeches? I don't see any. So.
President?
Yeah.
Actually, I did have one for comment.
Councilman, there, Councilman Green.
Yes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank both, uh, council member, Councilmembers Gilmore Richardson and Thomas for, um, bringing those points to our attention, to the public's attention, especially those who were not aware of, uh, those tragic, um, loss of life, um, that once again grip us as we continue to deal with, with COVID. Um, I want to bring, uh, a point, a little more positive point, uh, for some. I know last summer, um, both my colleagues, Councilmember Parker and Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, were very, very disappointed that they could not celebrate, um, in, uh, a activity and a gathering of women, um, that wear the colors of pink and green. I know they were very disappointed that they didn't have the opportunity to salute, um, the Ladies of Alpha Cap Alpha, who were scheduled to have their national convention, uh, or boule that was going to be here in the city of Philadelphia. However, this evening, they are going to be having their ninth, ninetieth, excuse me, virtual North Atlantic Regional Conference. Uh, they're going to have, um, their public meeting, um, this evening at seven P M. and then a reception at eight thirty, um, P M. Um, this is an outstanding organization. We know our, our current Vice President is a, um, member of Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority Incorporated. There are a number of members of, um, past members of the city council, uh, as well as, you know, my chief of staff, Kyra Harris, uh, Stephanie Marsh, works for the mayor's office, a number of outstanding women in the history of this, um, city. So I know they're calling on all of the public to participate, attend their public meeting, especially those of the Divine Nine. And I know for both Councilmembers Parker and Gilmore Richardson, who were so disappointed that they could not, uh, salute and have a chance to wear pink and green last summer, they can now do it this evening in a virtual way, um, by supporting, um, the Ladies of Alpha Cap Alpha in their ninetieth, um, conference, uh, that'll be virtually held here in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, that concludes our speeches. Only half the minority and the majority. And with that, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-one at ten A M.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, ten A M. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. And again, be safe. Thank you.